Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Um, calling the eight town regional school district planning board meeting to order. Uh, Zoom attendance. Charlie Kitchen. You're here. Uh, George McGurn.
Yes, Lucy, I'm sorry, I'm here.
That's okay, George McGurn.
Yes.
Hello, um, Donell. Kelly. Tom Burkle. Okay, Donell and Tom are absent.
Uh, Tom is in the waiting room.
I'm sorry?
Tom was in the waiting room as a couple of them.
Yeah, I got him.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Okay. Um, I'll come back to Tom. Um, Deb Phillips?
Yes.
Peter Taylor? Not here. Steve Bannon?
Yes.
John Silbert?
Yes.
Don Coburn?
Y- yes.
Laura Rodriguez?
I'm here.
Great. Jane Burke? Jane, you there? Jane, can you hear us? Uh, Tara White?
Here.
Susan Smith?
Here.
Bonnie Silvers? Not here. Colin Smith?
Here.
Nadine Haver?
Here.
Patrick Waite?
Yes.
Great. Sean Stephen? I saw you. You there, Sean? Sean, can you hear us?
Yep, you hear me?
Yeah, great, thank you. Nick Fredso? Not here. Um. Marie Ryan?
Here's Bonnie.
Okay, Marie, you're here?
Yes.
Molly Thomas is here?
Yes.
Okay, so Bonnie has arrived. Bonnie, you here?
Yes, I am here.
Great, and Tom Burkle has arrived? Tom?
Yes, here, thank you.
Great. All right, did I miss anyone?
Jane Burke is here now.
Jane, Jane, are you here? Jane's here, but she's not responding for some reason. Wonder if there's a problem with her Mac. Jane, could you try going out and coming back in so that we can be sure that we can hear you?
Lucy, did you get Don Coburn?
I did, yep. All right, and we have member Emeretis, is that the right word? Roger Kavanaugh? Is here, um, and who else do we have? We have Rob, we have Jake, we have we have Frank?
Yes.
We have Frank, okay, great. Um, so.
Uh, Lucy, I'm here, I wasn't, I couldn't hear a thing on my other device, so I just came in again.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Um, so first thing on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes of June 8, 2022. How do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is that you, Steve, who seconded?
It was George.
George, okay, great, thank you. All right, any, uh, discussion? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Charlie?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Tom Burkle?
Yes.
Deb Phillips?
Yes.
Steve Bannon?
Yes.
John Silbert?
Yes.
Don Coburn?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Nadine?
I'm sorry, I, I wanna, uh, abstain, I wasn't present.
Okay, Colin's abstaining. Nadine?
Yes.
Uh, Patrick?
Yeah.
Sean?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, did I miss anybody?
Oh, no, I'm, I am, I just, I, I had the Bailey for one, I don't like.
Okay, somebody needs to mute, because we're hearing interference, okay, great. Um. Next thing on the agenda is board and subcommittee membership. I put this on the agenda because, um, Stockbridge is going to, we hope, uh, the moderator in Stockbridge is going to uh, appoint a new member to the board. Patrick, do you know if that has happened yet?
Listen, I did just follow up about half an hour ago with him and a couple of members of the finance committee to try to get it done.
Okay, so we don't have anyone yet. Um, all right, um, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to our project manager, Jake.
Great, thanks, Lucy. It's good to see everyone, it's been, I think, a couple of months since we met, so I have a lot of updates for you today. Let me, uh, share my screen and we'll run through some slides. You all know I build these slideshows to organize my thoughts, keep me on target, and, um, also use as a resource for people um, after the meeting or those who are unable to attend. So I think you can all see this now. Hopefully. Uh, so we'll just get moving. Um, agenda, I just put these things again, I build a lot of slides just again for folks who aren't here um, to, um, align the agenda with, um, you know, what was presented during the meeting and what was discussed during the meeting, so some of this is really just for background. Our minutes we've approved, um, again, uh, continue to sort of remind people and refresh everyone's memory, um, keep reinforcing with the general public why it is that we exist, our mandate, which you've heard us, uh, say quite a bit, um, what our essential questions are in terms of the potential for the two districts to combine, and if so, how to best organize. Um, the, again, the, uh, mission of the, of our group ultimately is to, you know, generate solutions that uh, address the challenges that we face. Um, we followed, um, this is a slide I actually built for the task force, um, to sort of give them a quick overview of what our board, this board was up to, organizing the work and sort of describing it in three phases, and I believe this is kind of how Lucy's been, uh, framing it in the, um, public outreach, um, presentations that we've been making over the last six weeks. Um, so phase one obviously was the initial work, it didn't Mars, phase two is really what we've traveled over the last year, and phase three is where we are right now, which is the additional research outreach and, uh, work around the preferred option. Um, again, the preferred option is that the two districts merge, um, forming a single K-12 region with a combined high school uh, and, uh, maintaining existing elementary and middle schools as they currently are. And we're in the process right now of doing the additional study in work, uh, to deeply, um, dive into that particular possibility. Done the membership and subcommittee, so I'm gonna jump right into budget, which is really the first new item for, for folks today. Um, since the last meeting, um, which was in June, um, we have closed out fiscal year 22. Um, I do wanna just, uh, put a shout out, send a shout out to Beth, Superintendent Beth, and her staff who, uh, they were the fiscal sponsors, hosts for the, for the, uh, Fund Code 191 grant, and it was um, I, I, I had a really great experience working with them. Uh, and we did close that grant out with zero dollars in it, which is really good news. We've spent every penny. Um, and, uh, as of last week, I sent the final report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which was required by August 31st. Um, so I just wanna, uh, again, mention that those things were done in terms of our primary funding sources for this past year. Um, since the last meeting, we've, um, been doing a lot of work on ongoing funding, which we'll talk a little bit about. So heading into fiscal year 23, which began on July 1, uh, at the last meeting, I had, um, obviously shared with you where we were in terms of closing out fiscal year 22, but also shared with you what we had available, which, um, which we have in hand, or which are in effect the town funds. There are, there's a little additional money, which is part of a Berkshire Decana grant and some, uh, funds that were just, um, contributed by the districts, but as of July 1, we had around $51,000 at hand. Uh, additional funding for FY '23, which we'll be discussing, which I, um, have in the second tier here as possible, would be a second round of asks to the town for funds, um, this has been part of the um, remarks that Lucy has been making to the select boards in terms of the possibility to go back to the towns if we needed additional money uh, to support, uh, future work. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit about the rural aid money, uh, which is coming into the districts, and then I wanted to mention that we're in the process of, actually, we've written a draft grant to the Bar Foundation to support, um, educational visioning. Uh, I'll chat a little bit more about that in just a minute. And then I did want to point out that we have funding on the Burke 12 side, um, too, uh, and I've developed a budget for Burke 12, and we do have some money carved out to contribute both to my time and to, um, some consultant work if and when um, we decide to, um, to hire additional consultants where we need it, we need to. We don't have a, an exhaustive amount of money, we have between around fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. And so there's a little bit there, um, so it'll, it'll certainly help, but it's not gonna be, you know, the amount of money which was uh, raised last year. Um, I think as you all know, and I'll just reinforce this, the regionalization money was not funded in the budget this year. So that, that pot of money which we've had access to the last few years is not available this year. Is there any question on, on this particular slide and revenue sources? So let me jump to the budget. Um. All right, so there's a lot on this slide, and I'll try to slowly walk you through it, and, um, this is, uh, sort of my initial sort of early thinking, uh, on where we are. Um, at the last meeting, you all were presented with, um, and you offered your endorsement for what I referred to as the three month budget, which is July, August, and September, using the funds that we had available. Um, these are the same figures in effect that I offered at the last meeting, um, and they, um, tallied it basically as your project manager, um, some money for your research team, admin support, um, some money for the financial modeling, legal, website, and all that tallies to about forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, with the fifty-one thousand in hand, it leaves us with around six thousand dollars unspent. Um, of course, we're entering or closing out month two with three month projection, and so I thought it wise to be thinking ahead, uh, to both six month and twelve month projections, which I've put to the right of the three month projection, sorry about that. Um, and, and really, all I'm doing in some cases is beginning to, you know, sort of project forward, um, you know, additional uh, time that I would be contributing to the project, uh, additional research, um, team, um, uh, funds, um, to be used as we determine they need to be used, um, um, obviously ongoing support for, um, our administrative assistant, ongoing support for um, uh, the financial modeling, um, and then you'll see in the sixth month and the 12 month, there's a couple of additional categories of spending. And one of the, uh, categories of spending is community outreach, um, and we don't really have any money in this three month block for community outreach, we're basically managing that with what we have, um, you know, with basically myself, um, Lucy, and, um, a little bit of Mary Nash's time. But as we go forward into the six and 12 month block, we know community outreach is gonna be really important, so I put some allocations into the buckets. And then the ed visioning work, um, I've got sort of three buckets, um, pertaining to the four working groups. Uh, and you'll see the fifty thousand dollar amount for the nine through 12 educational visioning work, um, that fifty thousand dollars is also the fifty thousand dollars that uh, we are, uh, we are prepared a draft proposal, um, that's already been sent into the Bar Foundation uh, to request funds to basically, um, offset that fifty thousand dollars, we requested fifty thousand. So in addition to that, um, you'll see when I get to ed visioning that we're hoping to offer stipends for some of the lead, um, teachers and faculty who are involved in this ed visioning work. Obviously, we've got convening costs, um, um, we've got liaison costs, so, um, I've done some rough estimates, and this is about where we, um, would be settled. You'll see that the ed visioning money doesn't really change between the six and 12 month model, because the ed visioning is really gonna occur between now and, uh, December. And then hopefully we'll have, uh, draft plans coming out of that work in, in January, so those, those amounts carry over. So, uh, in effect, I've got totals, um, in terms of what the projections are for what, you know, a potential budget would look like, three months and six, three, six, and 12 months. And then I backed out the fifty thousand dollars from the Bar Foundation and the fifty-one thousand in town funds, and in case of the three month, we have money still to spend, in the case of the six and the 12 month, we have deficits, we need to raise additional money if we were to actually follow these budgets. I had a few notes that I just wanted to make. Um, I just put down probably more for my own reference, um. There's, like, as I mentioned before, there, there is a little bit of Burke 12 money that might be able to offset some of this, I think between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. Um, there may be additional other consultant work that you all wanna, um, contract with and pay for additional operational studies. And currently, we only have three contracts. Uh, we have a contract, you have a contract with me, uh, with Christine Kelly as your admin assistant, and we have a contract with the Abrahams Group for ongoing finance or work. So other than that, um, we're really sort of running very lean at the moment. Um, then the last thing I will say is, uh, we continue to seek out other grants. I got notice a couple of weeks ago about a community compact grant, you, you all, I think of a, I think Peter Dellen Berkshire Hills applied for that years back, and actually, we were successful getting that grant. Uh, I'm meeting with our grants manager tomorrow morning to talk about that grant, and we do have some funds on the task force side to pay for some grant writing. So, um, I'm hoping that, that might be a grant that I can bring back to you, um, in September for application in early October. So that in a nutshell is sort of where we stand from, um, in terms of budget and finance, so I'll pause there for a second, Lucy, to see if anyone has any questions or you wanna offer anything else. I do have a couple of slides on the rural aid money and the Rural Commission, that, uh, if we wanna talk specifically about that in a minute.
Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so why don't you move to that?
Oh, Jane Burke has a hand, please.
Jane?
Uh, well, I'm really looking for the research team and, um, the community outreach to be really sensitive toward bringing in input from the community. I'm quite, uh, I don't see any, haven't seen any interest in focus groups or, you know, it's been talked about experts from the community being invited in uh, because the my vision and the research team's vision doesn't match, and I would really appreciate having new voices in here, uh, because we've been hearing from the same people, uh, most of the time, so I'm not in favor of putting on more money into people whose opinion we've already gotten, and I'm really interested to see other educators and thinkers, um, involved, thank you.
Jake, you wanna respond to the question about bringing in uh, new voices to the educational visioning, which I think is contemplated here?
Yeah, and you know, it's, it's hard, because I, and I have a presentation which we're gonna be talking a little about ed visioning, um. The money that I have, um, that I have plotted out for the research team is really, um, mostly money that's gonna be invested in serving as a liaison for the ed visioning work. And so we're gonna have four working groups, which you'll see in a minute, we, we talked about this, um, I think at the last meeting, so people might have a general idea. But a working group that's focused on pre-K through four, one on five through eight, one on nine through 12, and one on CBTE. So each of those groups is gonna have, in effect, someone from the research team connected to it that'll act as facilitator, as notekeeper, as ultimately as, um, someone who's gonna bring back, uh, you know, a synthesized report of what these particular working groups have discussed and and, and hopefully, um, come up with. Um, I do wanna point out that the nine through 12 um, ed visioning group is you know, again, if we're, if we're able to successfully secure this Bar Foundation grant will be, um, two external consultants um, that actually come by way of the Bar Foundation. We've had, um, the reason that this whole Bar Foundation ed visioning work uh, came into play was that I had reached out to Bar and said, hey, we're involved in this project, which they're aware of, because they've contributed money to the task force, which is then um, flowed into the, the South County work, and so when I've written reports to them, they're aware of what's happening in South County. I basically said to them, you know, we could use some support, some technical support, some facilitation support around the ed visioning work. You've done some great work, uh, they're doing some really leading edge work around high school, um, reform and restructuring. And I asked for some, um, some consultant referrals, and they gave me quite a few, we did some phone calls. Ultimately, I got a proposal from a couple of the consultants, uh, and it was around forty-six thousand dollars, uh, which we don't have, and so I turned around and went back to Bar and I said, you know, would you all be willing to finance this consulting work? And they said, um, they basically said, if you write a proposal, we will, um, we will consider it, which is a pretty big step of the Bar Foundation, because if you get invited to write a proposal, that means, in effect, you've been screened in. So we, we've had submitted a proposal which is gonna be reviewed, um, actually, it's due today. It was due today, I submitted it yesterday, I get feedback in a, in a, in a week, and then, uh, they'll make a decision by uh, the end of September on whether or not we get the fifty thousand dollars, so that's a really long-winded answer to your question around external consultants, but, I mean, right now, we have a transportation study which is being done by an external consultant. And, um, I do wanna point out, when I came up with a forty thousand dollars for the month, the 12 month projection on a research team, I, I don't have any assumptions that I know for sure what that money is gonna be spent for. You all maybe decide there's particular things you wanna go deeper on, and we may, uh, again, have to seek out, uh, you know, additional, uh, expertise to, to do that, that work.
And on the community outreach side, and we'll get to this
Yeah.
when you get to that part of the presentation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we are definitely contemplating, uh, small groups, um, discussion groups with community members, so that that is in the work plan.
Yep. Well, well.
Okay, Patrick, uh, Patrick has his hand up.
Sure.
Hi, um, uh, Jake, are you looking for a motion to say ask for twenty-five thousand dollars or something like that for town?
Um, well, we have a couple of things which we've discussed as possible ways to go out the funding, um, and I think I sketched those out right here on this, the possible page, one is to go back to the towns to ask for money on a second round. And the other is to, and I've already reached out to both of the the school, um, committees, um, the superintendents and the chairs, um, to ask them to consider the possibility of contributing some of the rural aid, which is likely going to flow into the districts towards this effort, um. And I think the next slide actually is, is really, um, the context for that particular ask, so the answer to your question, Patrick, is, um, I don't know necessarily what we need from the towns at this point, until I know what maybe other potential revenue sources are.
This might, Jake, oh. Why do you feel that rural aid, which has other potential uses at the school committee level or at the school level, at the district level, is a better source of funds for this than simply asking for, you know, money for reserve funds or, you know, for ARPA funds, if that's legal, I, I have a check.
Yeah, no, I don't know that there's a I don't know that there's a strong argument for one or the other being easier, preferable, or the better pathway, um. I, I don't, again, wanna presume that the that the, any, any federal dollars that are flowing into towns or, or the rural aid um, are already accounted for or not, because I didn't build the school budgets and I didn't build the town budgets, right, so um, I would like to believe that these are potential monies that will flow into both the towns and the school districts after budgets have been prepared and settled. Um, doesn't mean that those monies couldn't be used in an effective way within those, but I would make the case that.
Do the superintendent have any thoughts on how they would like to fund this whole month?
Excuse me?
Do the superintendents have any thoughts on how they would prefer to fund?
So.
What, yeah, wha- we, we did send, Jake did send, um, an email to the superintendents um, that flagged uh, a possible request by this board of the two districts, uh, for uh, contribution from those rural aid funds to this regionalization work. Um, and Peter Dellen, do you want to jump in here and describe what you did with that request?
Yeah, we, we had, uh, a, a little time. Um, and, and initially, I thought the rural aid allocation would be much higher if anybody read the report, uh, and they should have listed in the report as as requested increase or something, but it, it was just printed as fiscal year 23 amounts, uh, but, but then I checked with Desi, but would I, I brought that to my school committee as a motion, and they voted to allocate u- up to sixty thousand dollars of our rural aid funds to, to support this work um, contingent upon, um, Southern Berkshire doing the same. Uh, I, I think to Patrick's question, uh, is it, is one better than the other? It, it may be easier to do it at the school committee level than at the eight town level, but, but the advantage to doing it at the town level is, it, it might, um, um, continue to build support for the work, so I, I think there are advantages and disadvantages to either, either approach.
I, I do think the timing is a challenge. If we're going back to the towns, we've got money available through September 30. Uh, and then we're effectively out of money, so to go back to the towns, make the ask, have special town meetings convened and votes, that's not gonna happen in time for October 1. Um, so we will be out of money and, um, not supported uh, this fall if we, um, can't find other funding sources, including, um, perhaps the rural aid that, that is going to be coming in. Peter, can you tell us whether that rural aid money that you you are slated to get, which I think is somewhere around, I can't remember, eighty or ninety thousand? I- is that already built into your budget, or is that?
No, that, that's the other clarifying thing I should have said, so, uh, th- that was not already built into our budget, and, and we hadn't previously allocated it, so uh, I, I, I believe my school committee felt they had flexibility with those funds, because our our primary needs were already met, and at, at least for the immediate short future, we we felt with the additional federal grants we received, uh, we, we were in a place uh, where we were comfortable, uh, allocating those funds.
Thank you. And I, I assume Southern Berkshire, and Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, but I assume Southern Berkshire is in the same I assume Southern Berkshire is in the same place in terms of those funds not already being earmarked for the budget that was passed and approved, that this, these would be new funds that would be available to designate as the school committee saw fit.
Is Beth fine at the moment?
No.
Yes, she is.
Oh.
So I'm going to speak to that and then I will follow up. Thank you.
So for us, it's a little bit different and I haven't I haven't made the call to Desi and our committee hasn't met as a full committee or next for for a regular meeting. It's not until, I believe, September eighth. So I haven't called to see what our actual number was. As I I had reported, I reported the same thing. That was the estimated or asked for number for FY twenty three with, so I haven't had the formal announcement. I will say for us, it's a little bit different. We don't particularly count on rural aid. Last year was the first year we qualified for it. So and so I don't know what the number is, but I will say that we have used a significant amount of our grant funding to support the building project that we're doing, the HVAC replacement project. So for us, even though the rural aid wasn't allocated per se, our budgets are fairly tight and we did that so that the towns didn't have to go and borrow. So I'm not sure how much we're going to have available to to allocate. I don't know what our number is, so I'll have to find that out.
I guess the question is, did you build into the budget that presumably covers the expected needs of the district this year? Any part of a rural aid allocation?
No, I didn't, but with that said, I just don't know. It was very, very tight. So I'm just not sure. We'll have to look at it.
Okay, well, I can, I think we need to open this up for discussion. But I want to begin by thanking the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee for taking that vote and signaling its support of the work. As I said, in terms of timing, I don't see the ability to get the funds we need for the next quarter out of the eight towns. And I would hope that at least some part of that rural aid, which as I understood it, included in the in the bill. One purpose being supporting regionalization efforts. I mean, I don't think regionalization and efforts at further regionalization is foreign to the purposes and objectives of the rural aid legislation, if you will. And I'm sure Jake can speak to that in more detail. So I want to, I want to open up for discussion the possibility of a motion being made to formally ask the school districts to contribute from their rural aid allocation some money to support our work.
Lucy, it's John Silver.
Yeah.
I'm happy to make that motion and ask for a second so that we can discuss it.
Okay, and what is the amount that you would like to request, John? Berkshire Hills approved up to sixty thousand contingent on Southern Berkshire contributing the same. Is that the, is that the motion?
Well, I would make that motion under the assumption that the rural aid being received by both districts is is close to the same amount. And of course, we don't, I guess we don't know that, or do we? Do we know whether or not this is, how this is distributed to different districts?
Jake, do you have those numbers? Or Peter?
Yeah.
Yeah, last year Berkshire Hills got around a hundred and five. And I believe, and Beth, correct me on this, that Southern Berkshire got around seventy. I anticipate that that number is going to go up ten to twenty percent, but we don't know that yet. And we won't know the final number till the state releases it in maybe a week or so.
So I guess my response to that would be if Southern Berkshire is receiving significantly less and is asked to contribute a much larger portion, then maybe we need to make an adjustment on the on the request so that at least we're not asking for either a hundred and ten percent of the aid they're receiving or ninety percent versus fifty percent for Berkshire Hills. And I suppose if the school committee in Berkshire Hills was willing to reconsider down the road, that we could revote a percentage of each district's aid in order to, in order to have a bit of equality. But I do agree with Lucy that there is virtually no chance of getting the eight towns to hold town, special town meetings and make that ask before, you know, the end of September. So so I guess for the moment, since we don't know the numbers, my motion would be it sounds like Berkshire Hills is offering at least fifty percent of their aid. And we could make a motion to request the same from Southern Berkshire for the moment, barring the fact that we have no numbers yet.
Okay, so is that, is that your motion?
Lucy, just to clarify, and I think Steve Bannon's on the call and could speak to this. One, I just want to type it into a calculator and do that, but but the motion that the Berkshire Hills people made wasn't a proportional vote, but up to sixty, assuming Southern Berkshire matches it. So what John is proposing is different than what the Berkshire Hills School Committee voted on. If Southern Berkshire did thirty, Berkshire Hills would do thirty. If Southern Berkshire did forty, Berkshire Hills would do forty. But but the Berkshire Hills people didn't vote on a proportional allocation.
Yes, no, I understand that. And I mentioned that in my comments just now. So I guess the only question is if everybody's comfortable with asking for a hard dollar amount as as in up to sixty thousand. I'm fine with that, too.
Well, I guess the question, Peter Dillon, that John's motion raises is whether the Berkshire Hills School Committee might be open, recognizing they didn't vote it that way. But whether the Berkshire Hills School Committee might be open to proportional contributions, as John outlined.
So in other words, if we had, if we could decide on a number that we would like to receive from both districts, and because each district receives a different amount, if we can get to the amount that we're asking in total proportionately between the two districts, I think that there's, you know, there's an argument that that's a fair way to do it.
Lucy, can I just comment?
Yeah, please.
So so I would say this, and I don't want to put Peter in that position, is that Peter is correct on what the motion was, and I won't suppose what our school committee will do, but we would be glad to bring it to them at our next meeting and discuss it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Peter Taylor?
Yeah, I think in some ways the Berkshire Hills motion provides the flexibility to go up to fifty percent. I think we heard from Beth that they still don't know what their number is, nor if there's going to be other demands on these funds. It seems like if we just mirror the motion of Berkshire Hills, it would, you know, provide the opportunity. And I think it's for us to make the case in our proposal while why, you know, up to sixty thousand is needed from both districts. But I think the matching the proposal can work in terms of sending this forward to to both districts.
I'm not sure I follow, Peter. So if if John's motion is based on a premise that there should be a proportional contribution based on the amount of money that each district is getting, how is asking each district for the same amount of money consistent with that?
Because we just heard from Beth that she has yet to know what number is, but also what other demands of those funds might be needed by the school district. And so by putting a proportional amount, you know, that does not factor in what other demands on those funds there might be from the district. And so by keeping it the way that Berkshire Hills framed it, it allows Berkshire Hills, I mean, Southern Berkshire to review or propose or us that will make the strongest case for the greatest number of funds. And essentially Berkshire Hills would match that up to up to sixty thousand, which it sounds like is perhaps, you know, fifty percent of Berkshire Hills. So that's my point in terms of just not knowing at this time what other demands might be present and allowing our motion to carry in either scenario.
So you're not in favor of John's motion as described, as I understand it? Because he's, he's looking for, his motion presupposes proportional contribution based on monies received. As opposed to going to the lowest common denominator, we assume Southern Berkshire will get something less than Berkshire Hills. So if it's a match, right, if Southern Berkshire says we can only do thirty thousand, right, then with your approach, the most we're going to get from Berkshire Hills is thirty thousand as opposed to a proportional contribution based on monies received.
I'm just trying to reflect back what I heard from Beth. So I'm willing to debate, I'm willing to have the whole board debate, you know, the motion that comes forward in a second.
So I just, I'm sorry to interrupt because I, I was making the motion. I think that the, I think that when I offered the proportional motion, I was actually trying to respond to Beth's points, which is that they they're going to receive less money and they are, they may need some of it when Berkshire Hills doesn't. So I think the proportional motion actually is responsive to that and allows for the greatest possible contribution from both both districts.
So, John, could you just restate your motion and then I'm going to ask for a second and then we can have further discussion?
Sure. So I'll make a motion that the Planning Board requests a fifty percent, up to a fifty percent contribution from each of its rural funds in order to support our work moving into the into the next session.
With a cap of a hundred and twenty thousand?
That would be fine with a cap of a hundred and twenty thousand, which would be the maximum. Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, let's have discussion on that motion. I'll do Patrick, Bonnie, Jane, and.
Um, well, I have a problem with the assumptions. Without getting into the intricacies of ARPA, ARPA, you know, with towns and all of our towns got less than ten million, we can use ARPA funds for any government purpose and a vote of just simply the select board of that town. All right, Stockbridge still has over three hundred thousand dollars in unallocated ARPA funds, and I could literally put it on the next agenda and get a vote on it. In addition to that, well, it's a little bit more of a stretch that this is a reserve fund transfer. You know, with the vote of a finance committee and a select board, we can justify this as an unexpected, you know, expense and also transfer money. And between the reserve fund and ARPA funds, my suggestion is we make a motion for twenty five thousand from each town. And if some of the towns can't do it because they've already allocated all their funds, I at least personally, not speaking for my board, but for myself, would have no problem, which is why it's maybe a little bit more than what is needed. I simply don't believe that positioning it as, you know, as the only option we have is from these rural funds is is a valid presupposition for the argument.
Okay, so you're speaking against John's motion.
Talk about all three, not just like prioritize rural funds first.
Understood. Okay, Bonnie?
Okay, thank you. I have to speak against this and for a number of reasons. One, I can totally understand why Berkshire Hills is doing, putting up the money that they're doing. Obviously, this this contributes to what, moving forward, they will need in terms of the new high school. So I totally understand their position. For Southern Berkshire, we have, and having served on our school committee's finance committee, we had every town come to us with please everything to keep the numbers as low as we could. Beth, using her business talents, we're making a major change in line with everything that goes on in terms of the air, the conditioning of our school without having the towns have to go out for a bond issue. I can hear very clearly, having listened to a member of the select board in Sheffield saying, well, if you get any money, how are we going to see the benefit of this? Beth is doing everything and our school committee has done everything to operate on a very, very tight budget. Any dollars we get, I can, I really cannot see how this, I'm speaking now as a member of the school committee, as a citizen of Sheffield, I don't see how taking our rural aid and putting it into a, this effort helps our district and does anything other than truthfully anger our constituents. I, you know, if the towns opted to vote to put up town money, that's separate. But I don't think we would be fiscally responsible in our actions if we were to take this rural aid, which we never got for so many years, and turn this rural aid over to this effort. It just strikes me as wrong in so many ways. Thank you.
Bonnie, just a question of clarification. How, how would Berkshire Hills decision to contribute to the work of this planning board, supporting the work of this planning board, help Berkshire Hills in its effort to build a high school? I'm not seeing that at all.
Well, I think whatever is accomplished helps in terms of the continuing work that has to be done during the coming months of the work that has to be submitted. Even putting that aside, I do not see how this benefits Southern Berkshire towns or our school district, having gone through what we've gone through with about all of the meetings, every constraint, and everything we are trying, we are doing to enable all of our students from eighth grade through twelve to be able to be immersed in this early college, high school and all of that work. It, nothing is ringing to me valid in terms of taking this money and not putting it towards the efforts that we have, especially given what we heard from all of our towns who I think were more active this year in the budget planning process than ever before. I don't, I wouldn't feel responsibly acting that I'm acting in a responsible way. And maybe somebody could convince me otherwise because I've been open to so many of our actions. And maybe somebody could convince me otherwise because I've been open to so many of our actions. But this particular one does not ring as something that I could vote for and feel responsible to all of the work we've done and with our towns and in our school committee to keep the numbers and the assessments as low as we did.
Okay, Peter Dillon, can you just respond to Bonnie's statement about how you're contributing to the planning board work?
Point of order, Lucy. Point of order, Lucy. You were asked for opinions from the group and I think it would be fair enough not to debate particular points, but take in each comment, put on the table and we all can then consider what everybody's been saying.
I hear your point of order, Jane. I would like Peter to have an opportunity to respond to Bonnie's statement about what the motivation of Berkshire Hills might be in supporting this.
Don't say attributing in terms of motivation. And I don't want to get into a debate in terms of that. I agree with Jane. I am just saying that of the two districts, given the situation of where things are going, Southern Berkshire has not said as five towns that we're looking to build a new high school, that we haven't come up to that yet. All I'm saying is the actions and I'm not saying anything in terms of motivation. I'm saying my view as a citizen of Sheffield, as a member of the school committee and as a member of this planning board, I don't see it benefiting us. I see, you know, you'll come to him, Peter's hand's been up. If he sees it that, and so I'm not attacking, I'm just saying perception.
Okay, thanks, Bonnie. Peter?
Yeah, so I just have one quick reaction. I'm going to try to tread a fine line. I think it's very challenging for any of us to infer intention of any group of people. The Berkshire School Committee is a ten-member committee. I think there were eight people at that meeting. I think, well, there might be some common agreement around why they voted to approve it, that there might, we didn't go into the granular details of it. What I am concerned about is this group has gotten very far and has been working for two plus years on this work. There's not a reliable funding source going forward. We may get interest or additional interest, some support from bar. There may be a possibility to ask the towns for some money. There may be an easy way to do that and a complicated way to do it. But I think it's smart to look at multiple ways to generate resources to continue to support the work. And what the Berkshire Hills School Committee did, I thought, was very generous to free up some money there. I could have made a counterargument, like all that money should go into tutoring or acceleration or any number of things, but it seems we're close to reaching a potential conclusion, one way or the other. And I was happy that they were willing to continue to invest all the time we're investing in this, but to also offer some resources to get us through the potentially last bit of this work.
Thanks. Jane?
I wanted to thank Patrick for giving us some perspective on the town side. I'm surprised that, we knew this was going to happen since July one, when we didn't get, or even before that, when we knew we weren't getting the grants. And I'm surprised that we didn't go out to the towns right away. And I must say, I find it difficult to be taking to my school committee a number that they need to come up with to match Berkshire Hills because that does not improve our relationships with each other. I think it's fine if you want to send us a letter that says if we have money, we could use it and be understanding in the fact that our transportation went up thirty percent this year. Our HVAC came in a million dollars over what we had planned, among other things. Our early childhood is, our preschool is expanding to sixty-three kids this year. We have places where we really need to put the money in. I don't think it should be taken as a lack of interest in the work that the board is doing. I think it has to do with the work that we have in front of us in our school. And I would appreciate if people's opinions weren't challenged because an opinion is an opinion. And I would feel a lot safer if everybody knew that they could put their ideas out and they wouldn't have an argument about their thoughts. Thank you very much.
Just to clarify, Jane, John's motion is not a match. It's not a motion to match. It's a motion to match in proportion to amounts received. So fifty percent of whatever is received was the motion, not a dollar for dollar match.
I would prefer that no amount would be asked for. I think it would be received in a much more warm way if we heard from you how you were trying to get the money and that if we had some money, we should, we could put it forward. I know I had a hard time getting people to vote for the three thousand that was asked four years ago. And so I'm just anticipating the best way to propose this.
Colin?
Thank you, Lucy. What I wanted to say is that I like the way John had structured his motion, asking for a proportion of the funds is, I think, a better way to ask for it. And then Berkshire Hills obviously can do what they want when Southern Berkshire responds. And also, I think the conversation that will happen will be, you know, they're asking for this percentage, how much do we want to consider? Obviously, it may not be the full fifty percent. I do think it's going to be dead on arrival for a couple of reasons at Southern Berkshire Committee. So for two reasons that I'm thinking of. Number one, we put a lot, Sheffield, as I'm speaking as a resident of Sheffield, we put a lot of pressure on the school district to keep their budget really tight because we pay the largest portion of the five towns. And I think New Marlboro does the same thing. So that's going to be difficult for them. And I'm just speaking historically, that's been the way it's gone. We just heard from two school committee members who don't sound like they support it. So again, I think it's going to be dead on arrival. I do like the idea, though, of it coming through the schools because then it's proportionate to the towns. Whereas if we were to ask the towns individually, it may not be proportionate. But I also think it's easier for it to get through to the voters that it's a separate thing from the school rather than, you know, if it's asked directly from the town, it's separate from the school. I don't know why in Southern Berkshire, but we all really struggle with the budget from the school. I think all the towns do. And it's a hard thing to get through all the time. I don't know if it's the same way at Berkshire Hills, but I know it is certainly in Sheffield, both at the finance committee level and then at town meeting. And I often think about how the participants of town meeting will interpret this. So I do support the motion, though. Thanks.
Okay, Steve Bannon?
Yeah, I just want to respond to what Patrick said and Stockbridge may be different than Great Barrington. In order for Great Barrington to come up with twenty-five thousand dollars, we could ask for the finance committee for an emergency fund transfer. I believe we have one hundred and fifty thousand for the year there for unanticipated expenses. It's kind of in the, early in the year to use that money. It makes it a little, may make it a little uncomfortable for people to start to spend the money this early before we really have unanticipated expenses. In addition, I will take Patrick's word that ARPA money can be used for it. That's not how it was explained to me, but that's fine. We decided to use our money for affordable housing. I don't know that we would change our mind. I would be glad to bring it back to the select board, but I think getting all eight towns to agree to twenty-five thousand months after the budget was approved would be difficult.
Okay, thank you. John Silbert?
I wanted to respond to Patrick also. I think this committee with this planning board would be very happy to take him up on Stockbridge donating a large percentage of their ARPA money, which they could do at their next meeting. But I just, I want to, and actually it brings up an interesting thing, which is, you know, we are all very concerned about proportional and equitable contributions here, but nobody is stopping any town from making a contribution in excess or on their own as they see fit. So I do actually think that this is an option for some towns. As Steve said, some towns have already allocated their ARPA monies. And, but I think, you know, I think that's a possibility. What I would like to do for the moment, however, is to keep that aside because that's not an either or. It's not whether we do this current motion that's on the table or have some towns or all towns contribute some ARPA money or go into their reserve. These are both possible. So I don't want people to get the misimpression that we shouldn't be asking the school districts for a contribution from the rural aid because we might be able to get ARPA money from any of the towns. The second thing I just wanted to say, not in response to Bonnie's comments about the new school, but just to voice my own, my own feelings about it. You know, I think the new school, there are two things, there are two possible options for the new school or outcomes, depending, I think not, maybe depending on this committee. One is if we fail to move forward, any amount of money we spend on the planning board at this point will not help them to build their own high school. Number two, if in fact we do succeed in combining the high schools, then this money is not going to Berkshire Hills. It's going to the new district of which there are eight towns. So I think that that's, I think that that's a very positive way of looking at why we're contributing to this effort.
I'd like to invite select board members from the Southern Berkshire towns to weigh in on this question of whether it would feel better to you to have this money coming from the rural aid money that is coming into the district or are coming back to each of your towns. So we've got Nadine in Sheffield, Tara in New Marlboro, and George in Egremont. Whether it would feel better to you to, for us to come back to the towns and ask for new funds there? I mean, at the end of the day, of course, the money that funds the school districts comes from the town. So it's all coming from the same pot. Oh, and Charlie, I'm sorry, I need you to weigh in as well from Alford. It's all coming from the same pot, it's just a matter of when. So if any of those select board members want to weigh in on this question, I think it'd be helpful. Nadine?
I certainly feel comfortable asking my board to contribute some ARPA monies towards this project. I would like to see it be a combination of towns and school districts, just as it was last year when we asked the school districts to help carry us through. But I totally do understand Southern Berkshire's point of view. I mean, as Colin said, we do put a lot of pressure on the school district to keep their budget tight for us. And I understand that if you get a pot of money and you've got a project going, you'd rather go to that pot of money than to have to come back to the towns and ask for more money. So I just think it needs to be a combination, Lucy, and I am happy to go to my board and ask for a contribution to continue our work.
Thanks. George or Charlie? Tara?
Go ahead, George.
Yes.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Oh, go ahead, Charlie. I'm sorry. I thought I was...
Yeah, I'm in favor of using our funds if we can use them. I'm not a hundred percent sure that we can use these ARPA funds for the project that is out in front of us now. But I'm willing to go back to our board and ask them for it. I'm not quite sure how much we have left, but I will ask them for a portion of it and see what they think. And we can get back to you guys later.
Tara?
We do have, we have allocated some ARPA funds to housing projects. We do have some left, which we have been throwing around on how we're going, what we are going to do with those funds that are left. There's so many projects out there that we're not really sure where we want to use it. We do have some idea of one project, which would take the remainder of our ARPA funds. I'm not, I could certainly bring back to the board and ask if some amount could be done. I'm not sure. It could be the twenty-five thousand that was talked about before, but there might be some amount that could be used from that. Other than that, other than that, we would have to go to a special town meeting to raise any funds. We don't have any extra and we don't have only fifty thousand dollars that we put into a reserve fund every year. So we're not willing to tap the reserve fund this early in the year.
Thanks. George?
Yes, well, I share many of the concerns that have been expressed by several of the other select board members. But let me add a few more. And in particular, I think we've got to be very cautious here about the optics of this planning board somehow attempting either implicitly or explicitly usurping town financial control. We are all, you know, accustomed to living with tight budgets. Most of our ARPA funds in Egremont have been allocated. There is, for those funds that have not yet been allocated, and I agree with Charlie, I'm not even sure it's legal. But there's already been a long line, lots of discussions about allocating that already. But I do think that we've got to be very careful about any perception that we are somehow using some backdoor to usurp town's financial control.
Colin and then Don?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Nadine said and then also say that I think what George just said is usurp the town control of funds was sort of what I was thinking of when I was saying I think it would be easier for voters to accept an ask from, you know, through the town rather than through the school district. But in all of this conversation, I feel like if I were on the Southern Berkshire School District Committee or one of the towns and our group is coming and saying, we want some money. If it was, I think it could be better thought out. In other words, we know what we need, we know what feels reasonable to ask from the towns. And so with the combination idea there, perhaps what we want to do is think it through a little clearer ask, put out a proposal to the town saying, this is what we're looking for each town and this is how much we're looking from each district and we feel it's a, you know, proportionate ask and a reasonable ask. And then let them decide from there what they... let them decide from there what they, what they would give us. But at least we're giving them a suggestion rather than saying, would you give us some of your ARPA funds? Let's, let's actually give them an amount and let's give the school district an amount. So if we want to withdraw this, this motion and, and come up with something more structured that, with amounts that might help the all involved that we're asking.
Jake, could you put your chart back up so people can see what the shortfall is to take us through to July? So the shortfall here according to, to this estimate is about 150,000. I think the, the, the 120 that Jake had on another slide would be something we probably could find a way to live within over that 12-month period. So I mean, I think the, the problem with not coming to some resolution on this issue today or tonight is that by the time we get another planning board meeting scheduled and look at this again, we're going to be through our money. So Colin, looking at that number 150, do you have a proposed amendment to the motion that you would like to offer?
Yes, I have my calculator out.
Okay.
Doing some math. So hang on a second here. We're trying to get to the 150, correct?
Or thereabouts.
Okay. I would suggest amending the motion to ask for, and this is just quick math. I did $14,000 from each town. There's eight towns and $20,000 from each school district. That would get us to 152.
Is there a second to Colin's amendment?
I'll second that.
Who was that? I didn't hear.
It's Peter Taylor.
Okay, so let's discuss the amendment now.
I'm open to anybody else's math or suggestions. I just quickly was, was coming up with something.
Okay, Patrick?
Look, just because it may not be possible for all eight towns participate, I would suggest a slightly higher number like 16,000 or 18,000, just so that I would also point out to the group that this is a once in at least a gen- if not several generational project. You know, it's not up to me whether our town, my town supports us or not. We're going to bring it to the voters. And we've all worked hard for two years on this project to leave voters aside, leveraging these districts is in the best interest of our communities, our students. And I would just hate to see this die on the vine because out of a $40 million, $45 million combined school committee budget, we can't come up with 10 or 15, 320 grand per town to see this.
Okay, Deb, your hand's up.
Yeah, and I just, I, I like Colin's proposal, and I also really like the idea of proportional contributions from Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire. So I don't know what that would do to the 20, it might be 20 and 30 or 20 and 35 or something like that, but anyway, that, that's, I, I just wanted to throw that piece into the mix to shift it a little bit in terms of, of the request. Otherwise, I do like the idea of requesting it from, from both pots of money, lessening the burden on each of them, and seeing what they can come up with. As, as someone said, some towns are going to be able to come up with 14,000 or 15,000 and some aren't. But it gives us some wiggle room, particularly if we put another 10,000 or however much that proportional amount is in Berkshire Hills. That's, that's my thought. Thank you.
So Deb, are you suggesting a further amendment to Colin's amendment?
I don't know what the number is because I don't know what the relative proportions are.
Right, but you could do, you could structure it the way John structured his and say 20%, for example, of the rural aid allocation from each district.
Yeah, that would be, that would be fine.
Colin, what do, what do you think of that amendment?
What does, I, I don't know what they got for their rural aid. So I don't know what 20% ends up being. I, I was trying to put a, a, you know, a number there, so it wasn't anything. In other words, I did want to have our handout saying, could we have some money? Tell us what you can give us. I wanted to say, we've thought it through. We have a 150,000 shortfall, and this is what we're asking from everybody, you know. So I don't know how to, how to do that with that one unknown with Southern Berkshire.
And I, and I would add to that, that we're also then telling them where the money has to come from, though that's, you know, Berkshire Hills has already decided where the money is going to come from. And I'm guessing that it's the only place, if it came from anywhere in the Southern Berkshire budget, it would have to be this new money, since the budget is, is as tight as it is. But you're right, we don't know what that number is. And so I, I, I hear, I hear that, that question. I don't know how to resolve it.
I have a suggestion.
Sure.
My suggestion is based upon what Peter and Beth say. If we do, we don't, we are quite confident it's not going to be less than last year.
Right.
If we use last year's numbers for each district and then do the percentage.
Will be, so 20% of last year at Berkshire Hills would be about $21,000. And 20% of Southern Berkshire, based on last year, would be somewhere around $14,000.
So maybe it should be 30%.
Okay. But we would need Colin to.
My handup was a long time ago, Lucy.
Okay.
And you said you were going to recognize me.
Okay, I'm just trying to.
Can I have my turn?
I'm just trying to figure out what motion is on the table for discussion. So right now, the motion on the table for discussion is Colin's amendment, which is 14,000 from each town and 20,000 from each school district. Go ahead, Don.
Okay. I think that the amendments to John's motion are a mistake. And I think the mistake is that we ought not to tell the towns, the districts, what the percentages should be. I think we should just state the number, whether it's 120,000 or 150,000. This is what we need. This is what Berkshire Hills has said. Southern Berkshire, what's your response to it? When we get that done, then we'll know what we have to ask for from the towns, if anything. So I would amend the motion. So it just asks for an amount of money, the total amount of money, and not for us to dictate or try to dictate to the districts who should pay what percentage.
Peter Dillon?
No, I'm sorry. I was just going to help on the math, and you guys did it admirably, so.
Okay, Bonnie?
Well, are you getting, is there a second to John's motion amendment?
I, I think, so the, the amendment, the amended motion on the table now is Colin's, and there was a second, yes.
Okay, so Don's done. All right, so I could speak. I like both what, what John and Colin have done in looking at this as not exclusively one pot or another. Unfortunately, you know, we did know this was coming, and I really like Colin's original look at it in terms of, I mean, I don't know what the ARPA funds are in different towns, and in, in Stockbridge, they may have enough of a cushion with 25. Sheffield, though, were the second largest of the eight towns, might have allocated all but 10,000. So I, I think if there is a way that we have enough time to be able to come up with a more realistic chart where we're looking for money than saying this is the straight amount that you're asking for, we might be in a better situation. Again, not saying that, you know, that it necessarily would be approved. I also think that it's really hard to wait to make a decision. Our next meeting as a school committee is September 8. That would be the point at which we would be voting on discussing and voting on any issue related to the, you know, allocating any of our rural aid to this project. So if you're saying we run out of money on October 1, that's not giving a lot of leeway. Therefore, if there is any way we could go back to what Colin originally suggested and John had brought up originally, going into both pots, but that we could figure out a better way in terms of calculating what this means to all eight towns and what it means to the school district. And I still like the idea of using for the school districts last year's numbers and then stating a percentage. That's it.
Okay, so are you in favor? Just so, I, I want to get clear on what the motion on the table is and where you stand on that. So the motion on the table doesn't have proportional contributions from the two school districts based on what they got last year. The motion on the table currently is 14,000 from each town and 20,000 from each school district. Am I correct about that, Colin?
Yes.
Okay, and you don't want to amend your amendment in any way?
I, I'd be willing to do the percentages. As I listen to everybody speak, we're all making the assumption that the towns and the school districts are going to pull the money from these specific pots, ARPA or rural aid. And and I don't know if that's the case. In other words, if this proposal came to Sheffield, $14,000, and I'm only a finance committee member, I don't have any, any power whatsoever. I think we probably would debate it and say, well, we've got X funds in ARPA, and, you know, we could pull some from the reserve fund, and between the two, we can come up with the 14,000 they're asking for. You know, that seems reasonable. I'm thinking about reasonableness is all I'm thinking about. So from the school committee's point of view, I don't care where they decide that it comes from. So maybe the question is, do people feel that Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire should be contributing equally, or should they be contributing a different amount based on their budgets? If that's the case, then let's just change the numbers to be proportional to their budgets, and I don't have the totals on their budgets, but that, I, I think a determinable amount of money for all these entities that we're asking for from is more helpful to them. Because if I'm a committee member, I want to be able to say, well, what are they asking for? Okay. Do we want to do that? Or do we want to do something less or more? And, and the committee decides. So having a determinable amount to ask them is, I think, helpful to them.
Okay, so if we took last year's numbers, right? For rural aid.
Yeah.
And we did 30%, which is a number that Deb threw out. That would be 45,000 from Berkshire Hills. It can come from whatever pot they want, but that's how we're calculating the number. It'd be 45,000 from Berkshire Hills.
That's not correct. It would be 31,000.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry, Peter. 31,000 from Berkshire Hills and 21,000 from Southern Berkshire? Is that math right?
That sounds about right, Lucy.
Okay, so that total, that totals 52 from the two school districts. And then if we needed another 100 based on Jake's screen, the other 100 would need to come from the towns. Again, it could come from whatever pot they want. But we'd be asking for 100 from each of the, I think, from each of the eight towns, which would be.
When you have a chance, can I interject?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the math, and then I'm going to turn it over. It'd be 16.5 from each town. Okay, go ahead, Steve.
So I think we've gone down a rabbit hole that we can't get out of. I think we made this simple. Let's say we just started the meeting, and there are 10 government agencies, eight towns and two school districts. Not up to us to tell where the money's coming from, and each one gives us $15,000 we asked for. It's $150,000. And we'd be done with the meeting by now. We'd already been done with the agenda. I don't think we need to divide it up in any specific way. There are 10 agencies here, 10 federal government, not federal, government agencies that we're asking for 15. If Stockbridge wants to give up from ARPA funds, and there's lawyers, say that's fine, terrific. Great Barrington has a pot of money somewhere in their budget. They can give it, and we get the 150,000, and we're done with it. I, I, I think we made this way too complicated.
Okay, so you're suggesting an amendment to the amendment?
No, I absolutely will not make a third amendment. If someone wants to withdraw all their motions, which there are so many now, I don't even know. But it just seems to me that we, we've gotten too complicated. Just 15,000 from each town and the two districts. We got 150,000, and we move on, and it won't be midnight when the meeting's over with.
Okay, Charlie?
I'm in total agreement with what Steve has brought forward. I, I, I think that that's the simplest way out, and it's not hurting anyone, any one town or, or school. I think that's the way to go.
Okay, Colin, how do you feel about it?
I, I'd like to withdraw my amendment and submit a new one.
Okay.
I would like to suggest that we request $15,000 from each of the eight towns and $15,000 from each of the two school districts. Our $150,000 budget shortfall.
Okay, and I think, Bonnie, can you mute yourself? I think Peter Taylor had seconded your motion. So Peter, do you agree to that?
Yes.
A restated amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion currently on the table is that we ask each of the two school districts and each of the eight towns for $15,000. Did I get that right, Colin and Peter?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Yeah, that was seconded by Peter Taylor. Okay, so any further discussion on that? Tara, wait.
And if the town can't come up with the 15,000, will we revisit what we're going to do if that happens?
I mean, I think the motion is that we ask each of the 10 entities for that money, not conditional on, you know, any other town saying yea or nay. We ask each of the 10 entities to contribute 15,000 towards the effort. And if we don't get 150,000, we'll have to reconvene and figure out what we do next.
We could always suggest our We could always suggest our budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that, is that an accurate response, Colin and Peter, to what you intended with your motion?
Very much so. Yes.
Okay.
And, and thank you, Steve, for simplifying it all for us.
Can I call the question for a vote?
Okay, question's been called. All in favor of calling the vote? Charlie?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Jane?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Marie?
Marie had to leave.
Okay, Molly?
Yes.
And Lucy's yes. Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote on the motion. Again, uh, school, each school district and eight towns request is going to be made of each of those ten for a fifteen thousand dollar contribution to support the work of our board. Those in favor, Charlie?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jane?
No.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan? Susan Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Nadine?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Uh, Molly?
Yes.
And Lucy's a yes. Thank you. Very well done group. That was hard. Okay, next item on the agenda, Jake.
I'll just keep moving here, right? All right, so I did have a slide, um, just we just discussed rural aid and a lot of other things, but I had a slide. It was specifically around this Rural Commission report. I'm not going to get into the details on it, but I will send you all this presentation. I've put the Rural Commission report in a shared Google Drive. And so if you click on the link, you'll be able to get access to it. I think you'll find it interesting reading because it does affect both districts. As Peter pointed out, the Rural Commission did make some really ambitious and bold asks of the state legislature, the state policymakers around support for rural efforts. And I do want to point out, as Peter said earlier, rural aid did get an increased allocation this year. It statewide last year was four million, this year it's five point five million. But again, one of the reasons that we had the discussion about asking the districts is because my understanding is that all the rural aid money is going to run through a formula to the districts. Even though there were recommendations from the commission that grants or monies be put out to support collaborative and regionalization efforts. It does not appear there will be any money for that. So I just want to make the point that the Rural Commission report is there for your consumption. And I'd encourage folks to check it out. So I'm going to quickly run through the project task areas. And I don't want to beat us in the ground because we're half an hour away, not even from our targeted end time. And so I will ask maybe as we go through this, Lucy, with your permission, that if there are subcommittee chairs that are connected with each of these reports, that they, maybe we bundle the two reports together. So the first body of work, as I said, there's, there's five work areas that we're working on right now. Community engagement, ed visioning, the regional agreement, additional analysis, which is transportation at the moment, and then advocacy. So I'll just run through these different areas. There's been a lot of work around community outreach. Um, the community outreach subcommittee is meeting every two weeks on Fridays. You appreciate the ongoing participation in that group. Um, but we've had a lot of activity since the last meeting. We had our two virtual community convenings. Uh, we've updated briefs. The committee with really Lucy's leadership has been publishing these monthly updates. First monthly update went out, actually yesterday, right, Lucy? So we just published it and those will be ongoing. Uh, we presented to all eight select boards, which went really well. We have presentations to the two faculty and staff coming up. One on Friday, one on Monday. Um, a youth forum coming up. So just a lot of work going on around community outreach with this subcommittee, really having heavy discussion around how we continue to do even more. Um, and, and I do want to point out, lastly, and I'll let Lucy jump in and, and sort of add to the conversation, that this morning we shot a video, or I should say Lucy shot a video. Um, she did a nice job. I, I, we, I think I was so, um, I, I was really pleased with the way that the presentations went to the towns that my recommendation to Lucy was that we try to capture that in a video that we could circulate on CTSB, through the website, through social media. So with support from Burke twelve, we hired a videographer to do that. And we shot the footage this morning. He'll be working on the editing and the copy. And we hope to have that out within the next, I'd say, two to four weeks. So Lucy, I can stop there and just have you, if you have any highlights additionally on around community engagement that you wanted to point out, I'm, I'm happy to have you do that.
I'd just like to thank the Community Outreach Subcommittee for their excellent work in brainstorming lots of different ways and approaches to engaging the community with our work. And I think what everyone on the subcommittee agreed was that there's no single way uh, that's going to be effective with everyone in the community, that we have to do lots of different things. So the video that we shot this morning is one way to sort of lay the foundation of who we are, what work we've done and where we are right now. Um, but we also feel very strongly that we need to have interactive sessions with smaller groups to allow people to get um, to feel really engaged in the process and to be able to offer up their ideas and thoughts and have a real exchange happen, which is hard at public meetings, especially when you have a twenty-four member board and it's, it's even harder at select board meetings. So having more informal gatherings is something uh, that we're really focused on doing in the, the next couple of months. Bonnie? You're muted, Bonnie.
Uh, I couldn't attend on Friday because of technology problems. But Sheffield Farmer's Market, we definitely can have a booth and they will advertise it. We just have to pick the date. And we have to supply our own tent and chairs.
Okay.
They're, they're welcome to it.
Thank you. All right, um, given the lateness of the hour, that's really all I want to do in terms of an update, Jake. You can move forward.
So I'll keep going. Um, just the only other slide I wanted to point out to the committee, to the board, is that I actually, I believe I did send this via email to you all, that we did have a synthesized report that captured the findings and sort of what we heard in the community convening, which are on June twenty-eighth and thirtieth. This slide is a snapshot of, of one of the eleven pages of the report, which was produced by our team. And, um, uh, you know, there's a lot of really great feedback. There were some open dialogue, open questions. We just surveyed the end and then we had four or five prompts throughout the meeting in which we captured thoughts and precious impressions, strengths, challenges, and where people wanted additional information. So, um, even though I know that the virtual format was, um, was great for some and not so great for others. Um, we think, again, it was one way in which we were able to, I think, do additional outreach and, and have conversations with the community. So this report is posted on the website. It's under resources. I did, I think, send you all the link directly, but, um, um, you're welcome to check that out. So I'll move along. We have a transportation study that was presented to the operations subcommittee. Um, and I know our, we, we've had a transition in chair from George to John. Thank George for all his, um, great leadership and support of operations. And welcome John to the, to the new chair role. And, um, uh, the transportation study is, is really close to being done. I talked to Rich Librie from Alliance. And this is basically the, the framework for what Rich and his team are working on. There's three scenarios. Uh, there are three of the first two scenarios. They're working on the third right now. Um, I took a little snapshot from one of the, the, the charts and the graphs, the grids that he's producing using the software that they purchased. So we're hoping to have a draft report by the end of the month, which is about a week away, and then have an opportunity to review that. Um, you know, bring it back to operations for review and a presentation, and I think to the full board at our next meeting. Um, so again, I don't need to repeat all this. I went through this with you at the last meeting, but this will be on the slideshow if you receive it. John, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I don't know if you had anything additionally you wanted to say about operations, but we're basically at this point, just waiting on the transportation study.
Uh, the only other thing we talked about was to, I'm not sure if we are putting back special ed into the education quality subcommittee or deciding that that's where it belongs. But we did discuss that and make that decision.
Okay, yeah, great. Thanks, John. And I, I think, and, and Deb will be on in just a minute. We do education. But I think there was an understanding because I did raise that with education sub. The education sub did agree that likely special ed is, is an educational area probably belong to them. So, um, and, um, so thanks for raising that. I appreciate that. All right, so moving along, um, one of the other working areas is the regional agreement. Um, as I reported at the last meeting, we had contracted with Mars to help us do some preliminary setup. Um, we met with Mars, I don't know, three, four times. And we had our closing meeting with them, I want to say the second week of July, Lucy? I should have the dates on them. I'm sorry, don't. Um, and they provided some general advising on, um, the elements of a regional agreement, the order of a regional agreement. Um, some of the approaches to how you might dig into some of the more challenging areas like assessment and governance. It provided some update on needed documentation and how you interface with the Department of Ed throughout the process. And they provided some supporting documents and things that may be germane to our work, um, things like school choice and intra-district choice, that sort of stuff. Um, we have some boilerplate, um, draft documents that we're going to begin to work from. Um, and in that draft document, we're looking at, you know, how, how is each district currently approaching each of the elements of, of the regional agreement? Um, are they the same? Are they different? And then where are there other alternative approaches that the board might consider? Um, this particular slide is just a snapshot of um, one of the documents he provided, which were the basic parts of the regional agreement. And so I think what, what I was going to ask Lucy to maybe lead us in was a, a discussion around how we might, how we're talking about tackling the work of the regional agreement, um, which is, is a really important part of the, of I think our effort over the next few months.
So as many may recall, our original idea was to pull together an advisory group um, from outside the planning board to start the work of working through and hammering out some of these provisions. Um, recruiting members to that advisory group from each of the eight towns has proved more challenging than I initially expected. And we've done some rethinking on that. Um, and so the idea now uh, is that the research team and our council, who's engaged uh, in this process, will put together a template which has various options uh, for each of these provisions, at least each of the provisions that, um, could have different options presented. And that on the assessment side, uh, the methodology for assessments that the research team present, present different method, different possible methodologies to the finance subcommittee. Um, and that those folks from the individual towns who have stepped forward and said they're interested in participating in this work. And we have a firm commitment, for example, uh, from Julie Hanum in Sheffield, um, that they be invited to participate in the finance subcommittee meetings and discussions and deliberations. And that the regional agreement template uh, actually be brought to the full planning board, again, inviting those outside, uh, folks who have stepped up and said they're interested in doing this, this work with us to participate in planning board meetings, sort of using the model that we did uh, when we were discussing the preferred model, the recommendation of the research team uh, on the preferred model for regionalization. So, um, using those who have stepped up and said they're interested to participate in our deliberations, but not creating a new group um, that would deliberate separately, then bring bring the results of those deliberations to the finance subcommittee and to the planning board. We're going to sort of streamline things, have the assessment methodologies um, previewed at the finance committee level. And then the full regional agreement worked through at the planning board uh, level. Because we're going to have to have that discussion and deliberation at the planning board level anyway. Uh, it seemed to make sense to try and streamline the approach and, um, rejigger things so they, they work with those two groups, finance subcommittee and full planning board, rather than advisory group, finance subcommittee and full planning board. So that's the thinking right now. So at the next full planning board meeting, we expect to be able to deliver to the planning board that template. All right, with all of these provisions fleshed out and various different options on things like composition of the regional school committee, uh, voting on the regional school committee, voting procedures, voting weights, et cetera. Um, and assessment methodologies. I leave anything out, Jake?
No, it's great. I think Patrick has his hand up.
I'd like to-
Okay, Patrick, go ahead.
I have two questions. Um, the first question is, this may be late in the game to ask this question, but since we're really talking about K through eight standing community and nine through twelve being part of the preferred plan, has anyone reached out to the Richmond School Committee? Because they tuition in, is my understanding, nine through twelve is the monument now. And I don't understand, like, if we're planning on allowing that, if we're planning on asking them if they want to join? Because it, I think it's, it's sort of unfair to the Southern Berkshire towns who are, you know, and, and as well as the Berkshire Hills towns to, to allow a ninth town to participate in what would be a merged high school while keeping their K through eight and while not being part of this agreement. That's my first question. My second question is a practical one. When will the finance committee meet next? It's not on the calendar.
Jake? Jake?
Uh, so the first question?
Yeah.
So the first question, um, we do get asked, I get asked on occasion, you know, where's Lee and Lennox and Farmington River and Richmond in this conversation? And the charge that, um, I was asked to, to lead as your project manager was to discuss the potential merger between the eight towns, um, five and the three. Um, however, if you do go back to, um, some of the earlier finance presentations, we did show some organizational models that did include the potential to, um, you know, think about Richmond and Lee and Lennox and Farmington River as, um, you know, possible partners. I guess the one thing I will say is in the report, in the final report, it did talk about tuition agreements with non-member towns. Um, and Richmond would be included in that group, and our recommendation was that it would be important for the merge district to begin to the tuition agreements because, um, our, our analysis at the moment is that, um, the tuitions are relatively low compared to, um, you know, actual operational costs per people. So, um, that's probably the best answer I can give you. Um, I, unless I was directed, I think, by the board to um, reach out to Richmond or Farmington River or Lee or Lennox, um, I would, I think our charge continues to be to work within the eight-town model.
And that is how the planning board was constituted. So we are a creature of statute. And, uh, we were formed, uh, by eight towns, not nine or ten. So, um, I agree with that. How about the second question? Do we have a finance subcommittee meeting scheduled yet?
We don't. Um, and so this sort of is a nice segue to the next slide, um, to keep the conversation moving. Um, so we will need to put a financial, finance subcommittee meeting on the agenda because, um, we continue to work with Matt Abrahams, um, from the Abrahams Group on finance and assessment scenario building. But I'd be honest with you, I am being careful about my hours with Matt because I want to preserve as many hours as our research team as I can so that we can use, use them in a very focused and targeted and efficient way. So, um, we've done some modeling, um, that is looking at operating capital, transportation and capital from the new high school, and then looking at multiple methodologies, um, including, you know, how does each district currently do assessment? Um, you know, what was the methodology we used in the final and analysis with the underlying assumptions and where are there additional methodologies? That include both the statutory methodology and then how districts allocate above required allocations. Um, and then additionally to that, um, we're thinking hard about projecting forward because, you know, as you know, in the final assessment, we did a one-year snapshot, and this is not a one-year game. We really do understand that we've got to work both in the near term and the long term as we project forward around potential, um, and, and align that with potential enrollment changes. Um, so, um, as was the case with operation, we've also had a tran- transition in leadership in the finance subcommittee from Roger Kavina, who's on the call. Um, and we, again, really appreciate Ro- Roger's good work as the Chair of Finance, uh, and our new Chair is Nadine Haber, who we're very excited has, um, taken on that role. So, um, I guess my job then, Nadine, will be to, uh, schedule with you a meeting, um, uh, so that we can begin to have Matt, I think, bring forward, you know, additional assessment methodologies as relate to the, um, a regional agreement, um, that can be considered and then brought forward to the full board. Um, so again, we've had a meeting since the last meeting, Nadine. I don't know if you want to add any other detail or Roger into, um, what we've sort of summarized today? Good.
I have nothing to add. Uh, I will look forward to chatting with you about scheduling the date.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, so moving along, um, uh, a big body of our work is ed visioning right now, and, um, again, very thankful to be working with Deb Phillips on this. We've, we've spent, um, a good amount of time both in committee and, um, between committee meetings, talking about, um, how we're going to sort of tackle this ed visioning work. And as you saw tonight, the budget reflects investment in some of this work. Um, so it's been reviewed with the ed subcommittee. We have a work plan and we have a worksheet plan, which is sort of beginning to think about how we're going to compose these various, um, working groups. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we've solicited support from the Bar Foundation, which I'm optimistic we're going to get. Just a few things related to the ed visioning work. Um, the purpose of the ed visioning work from my standpoint, you know, I wrote this in the report, is that this is really about the, the coming together of eight towns to build a single new district and its vision building. This is really why we're all at the table. And so I think that the exercises around ed, ed visioning are going to be incredibly important uh, to not only building, um, what we want this educational experience to look like for our communities, but also building relationships and trust and sharing best practices and really drawing out from the two districts, um, you know, what's possible in a single merged district. Um, so this idea of shared ownership. We're organizing the work into four groups, as you're aware. Um, I've mentioned already in this meeting, um, you'll see them down below. Uh, and we're going to tackle these, um, like this. Um, we're going to have a steering committee, which is going to be composed of somewhere between, um, six to eight people from each district. Um, and so that will include sort of a lead faculty member, um, staff and administration, and then we'll have a facilitator and/or liaison attached to each steering committee. Uh, the pre-K through four and five through eight, as you recall, in the preferred model, the schools continue to function as they currently are. So it's really not around design work necessarily. It's really more around getting to know each other, learning from each other, um, you know, sort of exchanging approaches and practices and, um, sort of aspirations of our own, what, what is occurring in each of these grade spans. The two groups that focus on the high school are really in support of design because it is imagining, what does it look like when you begin to, you know, build a single eight-town high school? We have two working groups because we have one that's really focused on the full educational academic program and co-curricular program, but then one that's going to be focused really on career vocational technical ed and career pathway work. Um, and so, again, the idea is that the steering committees will be, um, composed of, um, equal representation from both districts. They'll be exchanging and sharing. Uh, they'll be curating documents. And then the idea was we, we would convene a larger, sort of what I'm calling an advisory convening, which would really be more of an open, um, access, a format where people could get together. The steering committee would facilitate it, would share findings, what they've been discussing, what they've been thinking about, and really use those convenings, which would be more broadly accessible to people, um, faculty, staff, students and parents and community members to really weigh in on what the steering committees are, are thinking about. And then all this is going to get sort of packaged into, um, some findings and sort of a draft educational, uh, vision plan that we bring back to the full board. So that's really the, um, sort of the the meat of it. Um, and I'll, I mean, not Deb, again, I put you on the spot. I know we're, we're at 7:29, so I'm cautious of the time, but, um, is there anything that I missed there?
I don't think so. There's really nothing I want to add. Our next educational quality subcommittee meeting is Wednesday, September 7th, and we will begin to flesh out the details of the work that Jake just presented at that meeting.
Great. Uh, we have a hand up, I think? Patrick?
I, I think, right, as soon as we can, we should add to the agenda what we call the and I would suggest we not call it Monument Mountain, that we call it something like New Mount or even Mount Everett. Because I think that if the folks in Mount Everett are going to, um, feel like they're sacrificing to come north, we should consider the, the name and brand of the high school, if you will, going to them or something that combines the two names together. But I think this becomes a lot easier if we deal with the name sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will be using the, um, the two faculty, um, gatherings, uh, presentations of next week to talk about the ed visioning work. Clearly, the faculty and staff and administrative team are going to be an important part of visioning work. And so, um, we're going to be excited, obviously, to talk about that and hopefully um, potentially recruit for that. You got a couple of hands up, Lucy.
Okay. Uh, Bonnie?
Thank you. Um, I just want to go back to something that Patrick said. If we're looking at this as like a once in a generation uh, project, I think he brought up the whole issue of the, um, I think the regional agreement, I hope we're planning to deal with the relationship with Farmington River and with Richmond, so it doesn't become an afterthought. And I'm not saying adding those two districts and making ten, but I don't think we could put together a regional agreement without considering the current agreements that exist with those two districts. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And as I mentioned, we wrote a short section in the report around tuition. As it turns out, the Office of Regionalization, Michelle Griffin, who we're actually going to be having a call with next week, also, um, they support management and, um, sort of curating of tuition agreements statewide too. So, um, we'll have sort of one-stop shopping in terms of our connection to the Department of Ed around that particular topic. So just real quickly, I just wanted to have this slide on the Bar Foundation request for $50,000. We're making that request through Burke 12, and then if we win the grant, we will then donate that. Um, basically, we're paying for the consultants to do the work and uh, for South County. So you see the draft proposal here, and I'll hopefully have an update at the next meeting that we, um, receive the money, if all goes according to plan. Um, want to remind everyone, keep the frequently asked questions coming. Encourage folks to go to the website, drop in questions. We keep adding to these. Um, uh, did want to say, there's a lot of work that happens, um, between meetings, um, behind the scenes, talking with legislators, talking with our state partners, talking with other partners. Um, we're going to be connecting with the folks in, um, in Gilmona, Gil and Pioneer, working on a six-town regionalization effort. Um, and then, um, just continuing to really talk around, um, what we're trying to do as a group because what I would love to do for you all is raise all the money uh, and get the state continue to really see, um, the impact, the importance of what we're doing here. Um, and, and, and really hopefully encourage them to, um, continue to carve out funds to support this work because even with the money that I really appreciate that folks have approved today, um, you know, uh, i- if we continue to move forward, there's going to be, need to be continued investment, um, because there's a lot of transition work that happened, what will happen over the next, um, you know, several years. So anyways, advocacy work is ongoing, and I think Lucy, that about buttons it up. I was able to just get in with a few minutes after 7:30.
That's, that's great. Thank you. And I, I do want to thank Burke 12 for its past and continuing support of our work. Uh, it's really been significant, and we really do appreciate it. The, the video that we shot today was uh, paid for with Burke 12 funding. So thank you. I hope you express to, to that group our appreciation for its continued support of our work.
Sure thing.
So, um, I don't see in the attendees section uh, anyone other than press, so I don't think we have any public comment tonight, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, Chuck?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Did Tom Burkle drop off?
Yes.
Okay, um, Deb? Deb? Uh, Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve Bannon?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Don? Uh, Laura? Thank you, Don. Laura? Uh, Jane?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Uh, did I miss anyone? Lucy, yes? All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.